Continue on with the Wycomico County Council, November 21st, open work session. The first item on the amended agenda is the grant program for workforce development. I know we have Mr. Wayne Strausberg here, Dr. Ray Hoy is here. Gentlemen, good afternoon.
So, we're looking at a new endeavor, a little bit different from the prior Warwick Scholarship Program that we had before. This is specifically for workforce development as opposed to high school graduates, am I correct?
That's right.
Okay. Would you like to expound on that?
Sure. In fact, you all brought this up last year, early on when we were discussing the Economic Impact Scholarship, and I think Mr. Culver thought it was a great idea and had asked me to take a look at this, I think focused the efforts on the Economic Impact Scholarship last year, and then came forward with this proposal. Hopefully, you've received information, you've had an opportunity, but just for an overview, the program is designed to provide tuition and fees scholarships for Wycomico County residents who've been in the county for at least two years, for our continuing education and workforce development course offerings. And it can be for a course or a series of course, courses that prepare for certification, licensure, and entry-level job training, is what it's really all about. The objective is to identify a certain dollar figure to be allocated for these scholarships that'll be accessed on a first-come, first-served basis, but it will have, unlike, the other program is last-dollar funding. This is a little different because in the non-credit arena, there's very little scholarship availability. TEL scholarships are not eligible for non-credit training. So, what we're looking at here is having an economic test to determine how much need an individual has, and there'll be a sliding scale, probably at 25%, 50%, 75% contribution, 100% if it would glean so necessary, toward the cost of those training programs. So, we have a number of things that we currently offer, and we always add to and subtract from based on the needs of local business and industry. But again, these things are licensure certifications. In fact, I think you received a list of some of those offerings, and I've got an updated list, edited and updated, that I'll give you today. But as was indicated, this would be changed from time to time as different offerings, yeah, became available. But this is just kind of an example, and also includes our current tuition rates for these courses. So, the applicants would have to be 18 years of age and have to have been a high school graduate. Anybody who hasn't graduated from high school will offer them an opportunity through the Adult Education Program, which is a free education in order to earn their GED or other award that leads to the Maryland High School Diploma. They have to have demonstrated financial need and be in good financial and disciplinary standing at the college, because we have people sometimes that come back to us attempting to get into the non-credit arena where they either owe us some money or have had disciplinary issues with the institution, and we're just not going to have this as a workaround for those types of issues that may exist. They have to indicate what their career goal is, and it has to be consistent with the coursework that they're requesting. And if there is a series of courses, which there are with some areas, example would be EKG Technician, there's a series of three courses for that type of training that they have to go through, well, they'd have to successfully complete the first before being able to participate in the second, and successfully complete that in order to be able to participate in the third. So, the range of offerings includes the Truck Driver Training Program, which we have great success with those completers getting jobs, through Certified Nursing Assistant, another area where 100% of the people can get jobs, no question, Medicine Aid, another area where the hospitals have been coming to us. In fact, we're going to be developing programs specifically for PRMC in that arena because they're in such high demand and high need. These are the types of offerings that we have included on the list. It's kind of an overview.
Great, great. Questions from council? John? Joe?
The, I'll ask you the same question, the gentleman that came in last-
Brian Newton.
Brian, I asked you a question, he wouldn't answer it.
Maybe he couldn't.
No, he said he wouldn't because afraid to lose his job.
Well, he knew better than that.
And there goes the bus.
If you, you know, if you take a pool of money and you have to spend it, to where it would do the most good, okay, do you think this would do more, be better beneficial for the area than the other tuition program we have? If you had your druthers, which would you rather see instead of both? Instead of both?
And you can refuse to answer this question as well.
I could. They both have a value. The nice thing about this particular program is it's short-term training and puts somebody immediately into the workforce. It's also for people who need entry-level skills to get a first job that might not, they never went to college, obviously, or they would presumably have some of that skill set, they didn't learn a skill previously, and it can be, this one is available for older adults. So, I, this has a great deal of value in that respect. The other program that you're referring to, the Economic Impact Scholarship that's in place now, has great value because it provides an opportunity for people who probably wouldn't otherwise have gone to college, to be able to go to college, afford to go to college, and hopefully become successful, stay in our community, and fill jobs that are going to be different from these jobs, because they're going to have a higher level of skills than these individuals.
Okay, so you didn't answer the question.
I didn't answer the question either, because I think they're both very good.
Yeah, that's fine. Okay, all right. One thing I noticed here, we're talking tuition and fees, now are you suggesting pay, payments for tuition and fees?
Yes.
Okay, because I noticed some of the fees are a lot higher than the tuition's and vice versa.
There's a good reason for that.
Yeah, yeah, I understand. I don't know if this is the time to do what I'll say what I want to say here, because this basically addresses both programs, if we keep them, keep both programs. And I'd like the council to think about this, and Wayne, you're our financial wizard here, so, I'd like to see-
Except when I make budget mistakes.
Yeah, well, we all do that, right?
You know, Joe, Wayne's going to use that quote, throw that back in your face here in a couple of months.
You know, we're giving away taxpayers' dollars here, so, and we're giving it away to people that need it, okay, hoping it'll do some good. And the history so far with the other programs, not been too good so far, but anyway, I would like to see us take, whether we do this or not, or just keep the other or not, to roll these into a forgivable loan program. We can set the money aside, so we know it's there. Whoever enters these programs has to sign a loan. Now, the free tuition was done as a workforce development, basically, to keep brain power in the county. We could set it up that they had to stay and work in the county for two years, three years, whatever we come up with. If they finished college, they did their due diligence, got through the program, got everything done, worked for a couple of years, we would forgive the money. If they went through and did six months and dropped out, they'd have to pay it. If they finished the program and moved out of the area, they would have to pay it. Be easy to keep up with, we've got plenty of financial ability at the college, I'm sure, that can keep up with this.
I won't agree with that, but go ahead.
Well, anyway.
I think we don't have great ability, but I don't think we have the staff to try to manage that type of revenue keeping.
You have classrooms with people taking accounting courses, maybe that would be a good learning tool for them.
Absolutely, and we can increase our budget to hire more people to do that.
No, 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 we don't do that. I said, I said the classrooms could do it, students could do it. But anyway, I think that's something that we should, as the Executive's Office and the council, maybe should explore for both of these programs.
Joe, as you know, we send officers to Warwick for the correctional officer training. We pay for it, and they do sign an agreement, and if they leave prior to two years, they have to reimburse us for those costs. So, I, I understand what you're saying. The question that I would have is this, what if, what if someone comes into the program and just finds that they're not academically able to meet those requirements, whether we say it's a TOE, or whether we say it's a 225, 25, whatever, are we going to then hold them responsible for repaying a loan because they simply were not academically able to achieve?
Well, if, because, if they're not academically able to achieve, the taxpayers are going to have to pay it, so somebody, you know, somebody's going to have to pay it. Should the taxpayers be settled, saddled with having to pay it because they can't, they can't achieve, you know, I'm sure there's going to be, maybe you can have a group of people that, in the end, for forgiveness, or something, but, you know, there's going to be those type of situations, but, you know, these folks ought to have some skin in the game. They really should. You know, they're, we're giving it away, we're giving it to them for free. And as you know, that when we went to that dinner that night, the last dinner they held, the young lady got up and touted the program as being very helpful for her, made the statement as when she graduated, she was going to the other side of the bay. So, this, this is being done as an economic development program to keep people in Wycomico County, and so we have better employees. So, I think we need to do something to hold the feet to the fire a little bit, make it work.
One of the concerns, Joe, I have about that is recognize that many of the students who go through this successfully will transfer onto a four-year institution. So, if they transfer to, say, a Towson or a College Park, they've left for two years. Does that mean they have to repay even though they may very well come back upon completing their bachelor's degree? And historically, 90% of our students stay in the community even after they go on advanced degrees, so that's an issue.
And the way you would handle that is you'd set the loan up for, say, 10 years, eight years, whatever you wanted to do, and within that eight years, they had to work so many years in Wycomico County. So, there's-
It's fine.
There's ways to get around all of it, you know, to get, not get around it, but to make it work.
Are you saying that workforce development students?
No.
We switched, we switched there from that.
Yeah, we're back to that.
I'd rather not, I'm not prepared to talk about that one today, but I know it's tough to talk about one without the other.
I'm talking about both.
Yeah.
You know, I'm talking about both. So, and you're talking about they have to work in Wycomico County for two or three years, it doesn't have to be the exact two years after they graduate, it could be two years within a year period.
Well, I think you have, you have a proven track record, I mean, you do track workforce development, don't you, more so than stand, regular students, aren't these, aren't these people easier to track? I thought you did.
No, they're not easier to track, we track, we try to track everybody. Actually, the Maryland Higher Education Commission does the follow-up studies, and they use the, it's at the University of Baltimore, they have a research arm.
They do the-
Can't remember, Joseph Javid Center or something like, that, yeah, that actually does follow-up, because they track people by social security number, which we can't do, and look at employment records in the state of Maryland, and find out if the people are still in the state, if they continued their education, and if they're working, and where they're living, and that sort of thing. So, they, we get the information from them, we don't make it up.
So, it's a general oversight, it's not specifically targeted at these students?
Correct.
Yeah. John, I think, did you have a question, John?
Do you want to go?
Go ahead, guys.
Although we've referred to this as a giveaway program, it's really an investment in our future, isn't it? You know, we look at our economic status of Wycomico County and what we have here as far as the income and the opportunities for people here, and if we don't invest, not necessarily give away, we're not giving away taxpayers' money, we're investing in what tomorrow's going to be in our community. And if we don't make a commitment to the people in our community, how are we going to get any better? Ray, what's the dollar figure you put on this?
Well, this is whatever dollar figure you would come up with. You know, one of the things that Bob talked about was maybe $50,000 a year.
Starting?
And, again, a first-come, first-served basis, and find out how much is drawn down, how much interest there is, and that sort of thing, and see what the return is. And again, based on economic need, somebody might get a 25% or 50% or, you know, we'll see how far the money goes. Honestly, I don't know how to judge it at the moment. Garrett County introduced, you know, we know that Garrett, our program is modeled after Garrett County's program, and they introduced this in 2010 and have been doing this ever since, that period of time. So, they have seven years' history in terms of how this is working for them. So, they started out with the high school graduates, and then they expanded it to do this sort of thing as well. And I think they started the high school graduate program in 2006, so it was four years later that they introduced this aspect of it. And I agree with you completely that I see this as an investment as well.
Well, I didn't, I didn't mean to say that they wouldn't get it. If they do, if they do the work and pass, they're going to get, they're going to get, it's going to get paid for. We're not taking it away from anybody that doesn't do the work, and it's a forgivable loan, they don't have to pay it back.
Well, to keep, I'll abide by your desire just to keep on just this, it seems like Joe's idea for this as a forgivable loan would be probably much easier, because it seems unlikely to me, and I guess you're, you know, you're the expert, that people aren't going into being a certified pool operators just on a whim, they go because they think that they have an economic opportunity. So, you know, forgivable loan on that would make, you know, I mean, that would be the people who are, you know, for whatever reason, you know, being trifling by doing this sort of stuff, you know, I mean, you know, where, as most people, I would think, and all of these would be going into them specifically because they think they can get a welding job or a truck driving job. So, it would probably be, probably be, you know, a forgivable loan program would be fairly easy to manage, I would think, with something like this. I mean, we can probably disagree on that, but I mean, I know that there are other counties that are, other promised scholarship programs that are, you know, forgivable loan issues. I mean, there are, you know, we don't have to reinvent the wheel on any of this stuff. I mean, there's, there's other stuff we can borrow from, so I think it is workable if that's the path we wanted to do. I guess the question I have is, you know, you look at, you know, HVAC Technician is $3,700, and, you know, Quality Controls and Statistics Measurement is $324. Are you thinking on, you know, if someone comes in, you know, for that or for the truck driving school, is that, you know, you get 10 of those people, you know, they're going to use much more money than they're, you know, someone who is, you know, wants medical terminology is $33, you know, I mean-
Well, that one doesn't stand by itself, the medical terminology. I mean, you're not going to get, you're not going to get a skilled, employee ability skill with that, but it's a combination of that and medical coding and billing. They need to take both classes, they just happen to be separate, because some people who are in the field come in and need refreshers, so we have separate classes.
Are there thoughts about, do we reserve, you know, is every, you know, if you have 10 people, if the more expensive ones, then, you know, obviously, the money's going to dry up a lot quicker than if you have 30 people at the, I mean, is that something that's been thought about, or, because it's not like just tuition, you know?
Well, clearly, that's worrisome anytime you do something like this, and we've had people who have made contributions to this type of scholarship in the non-credit arena, and we know that that's obviously an issue there, you know, one person can eat up the scholarship, if you will. So, no, candidly, no, we haven't looked beyond, okay, first-come, first-served seems like an easy way to handle it, but it's, but it's going to go fast, but the people, typically the higher-cost programs are going to lead to higher-paying jobs. And, you know, I don't disagree with, especially with this particular program, an opportunity for repayment. I will caution you that we're not bankers, we don't have a banking arm, that, you know, and I don't know how we would do it, to collect it. But, you know, I, I don't disagree, and presumably, these people are going to get a job immediately, hopefully, the repayment wouldn't start until six months, a year, sometime after they've gotten, gotten work.
I think you misunderstood me, they don't have to repay if they stay here and work.
No, no, we, it was two different things. I think I was responding to Mark's question about making this particular program a repayable one.
Oh, no, no, I was just going off of Joe's.
Oh, okay, okay.
Oh, yeah. If you want to make it repayable, all right.
No, I wasn't suggesting that, I thought you were.
No, 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 I was, I was just, I was lobbing some parts of this.
You know, they would say they stay and work in Wycomico County, they might live in Wycomico County and work in Worcester County, so, I mean, you know, that would be fine, too. I mean, we're, we're not talking about county lines.
It's almost a regional thing, I would think.
Yeah, but, yeah.
If they either live here or work here, something like that.
If they, if they pay their taxes.
Right.
You know, and if they, they go through the program, they don't have to pay it back, and we make sure we have the money land-banked to pay you, so you get paid.
Question I have, too, is, is there any way to sort of fashion this so that the program, because you said, it seems to me like we're approaching it initially as a first-come, first-served basis, but is there any way to sort of work this so that it's geared towards careers that the county needs? I don't think it's, I don't think it's going to benefit anyone to, to do this program for people who are trying to get CDL licenses, because my, my guess is you have 1,000 of those people standing in line waiting to-
Oh, they need CDL.
I know they need them, but they're already standing in line, quite committed, I'm, I'm just guessing here, quite committed to, to make the, the payments necessary to achieve this, whereas, you had said earlier, you can't, we can't get plumbers. Maybe you would create a, a program here where anybody that is interested in getting in the field of plumbing would automatically have Joe's forgivable loan program or a scholarship if they wanted to enter into the plumbing business.
Forgivable loan program, right.
But more targeted, more to what we know is needed in Wycomico County.
Well, it, I want to respond to your first point.
Okay.
Yes, you're right, there are plenty of jobs in CDL. However, there are many people who can't afford it, they, and it's, you know, it's a big-ticket item, it's just under $4,000.
Right.
And we work with these people, they can't get it on a credit card, they can't get it from a family member, and they can't get it from a bank, and then they can't go to school. And that's just unfortunate, because there are jobs available in our community for people who would truly be interested in that type of occupation. So, having a support possibility for them really makes a big difference. I believe you'll find that all the jobs, all the classes listed here lead to jobs that are in our community, especially, we just had a meeting with the healthcare community, the CEOs and HR directors from all the regional healthcare entities met with us, and we were talking to them about the future and what we should be looking at in terms of programming for the future, and one of those things was medicine aid, you know, it kept coming to the top, and that wasn't a high-yield area in the past, but they're changing some of the care plans and the way they do work, and that is becoming a larger field. So, we have to stay in touch and in tune with what the local job market is. Most of the things on this sheet, there's jobs available for them, to my knowledge at this time. Otherwise, we stop offering them, and then we transition to those things that are. The nice thing about non-credit is, it's, it's, we can be very fluid with it. The process is not the same thing as to develop a curriculum for a one- or two-year program of study. This is, we can respond pretty rapidly. The Maryland Higher Education Commission has to approve our course offerings before we offer them, but we go through that process in a very rapid fashion, and they approve them within three months. So, it doesn't take us as long to get those things going.
What about considering, maybe taking the opportunity at this time to include some type of public-private partnerships, where we could be giving half towards a CDL license if a corresponding company might want to commit to, to the other half, actually being able to go to the, the community now, the businesses in the community and say, hey, here's what we're bringing to the table, what would you like to do?
And, and we have a number of businesses that do step up and pay for people to come and take classes with us. Give you an example, Dumb River Power, for example, they're having a very challenging time getting people to be linesmen. And the biggest hurdle is their ability to pass an assessment of their qualitative abilities, some of their writing abilities, and being able to read blueprints, and they do an assessment for each person. They came to us and said, would you do a boot camp, would you create a boot camp for us, so that these people can pass these skills on our assessment? And then they go out and recruit people, and they pay for them to go through this assessment program that we have. We're not teaching them how to do the line work, but we're training them to be job-ready for that particular industry, and they pay for it. Then you have a lot of the companies that are one-offs, they need one or two people, maybe in a doctor's office or something like that, and they're not necessarily paying for people to do this sort of thing. I mean, it would be nice, be a lot of work to try to find all the different partners to do it, but we have a number of people who come up and say, I want to support people who are going into X, and they may only be able to support one person. It's not, now, you could say, well, how about if we split your money and the county would help support another? If we, we could look for a dollar-for-dollar match for something, if you wanted to put a program together like that, and encourage us to go out and raise money, do a dollar-for-dollar. The challenge we have with that is, this is very localized to one county, whereas we support three counties, and a lot of the people who support us are trying to support all three counties as well.
Well, that was my next comment, actually, next on my list was whether this would be a good time to, to appeal to Somerset and Worcester, and maybe get involved in the same type of program.
Sure.
And work, work through the Chamber of Commerce to try to find these businesses. I wouldn't put the onus on the, on the, on your, on the community college itself, maybe the Chamber, the local Chamber of Commerce would like to get involved in this and, and help their, their members develop some type of plan.
Mm-hmm.
You know, I'm just throwing it out there.
Sure.
These companies like DPNL and places like that, if they, if they brought somebody to you and put them in that program and they dropped out of it, would they still pay you?
Yeah.
They would still pay you for the person not taking the course?
Absolutely.
Is that right?
Yeah, well, I mean, we have our investment in it at that point.
They probably wouldn't have a job.
They could see, but they're not going to get a job, certainly, yeah.
So, how much does Warwick receive in tuition and fees from Wycomico County residents on a semester? I mean, if we're talking about doing $50,000, we should be able to have a number to be like, well, we're going to cover 50% of the current demand in Wycomico County, you know, you see what I'm saying, that, that right now, we should be able to know how many Wycomico County residents are in these certificate programs and see, you know, what the demand is from Wycomico County versus what the budget ask would be. Does that make sense?
Kind of, except, except, and I don't know the answer to your question today.
Yeah, I mean, yeah.
And that's something we can look, look at, but I guess part of this is, those people who can't afford it are doing it.
Yeah.
Those people who can't are the ones that this is trying to reach out to help support, because this is, this is an economic need program.
It's an increase, too.
So, it, yeah, it would be the increased number of people that would take advantage of it, not, this is probably not going to necessarily supplement those who could, have been able to find ways to do this.
Because that would be part of my concern, too, is that there's obviously people who can do it already.
Right.
And, you know, are we going to be saying-
Again, this is going to have a means test.
Okay.
So, this is a scholarship program as opposed to the, to the other program.
Right, that, that answers that, then. How many organizations exist that do give financial aid to these sort of programs? Does the Children's Home Foundation, do they do that? Is that some of the stuff that they do?
Children's Home gives scholarships to students who attend Warwick, that's one of the entities, I don't know how many anymore, but, you know, it's-
I mean, I, I know that, you know, you can't get federal loans, you know, the stuff like that, for this sort of stuff.
Not for this type of training, no.
Yeah, but there are a few organizations in the community that-
Rotary Club supports a scholarship, I mean, we probably have 26 to 30 different entities. My wife and I support a scholarship annually to full-time students, and part-time students is ours, but, you know, just, people do have, have scholarships that they have set aside for students, some of them are for the red-headed, left-handed Eskimo, and what I mean is that they want somebody who graduated from Parkside High School, who's going to major in engineering, and will transfer to University of Maryland, Baltimore County, you know, that, that's specific, and some of those don't get used, and others are more general.
Yeah, I'm just trying to get an idea.
Yeah, I don't have a real sense, but kind of, that's kind of an overview response.
Johnny, in reference to something you said about making it on a tri-county effort or something along that line, we looked at it last year because we, at tri-county, because we identified a need for sanitary engineers.
Right.
And they don't, nobody goes into high school and into the lower schools saying, I want to grow up and be a septic tank operator, but the entry level into sanitary engineer, it pays very low. But we are having an aging out of the different plants in both Wycomico County and in Somerset and in- But we are having an aging out of the different plants in both Wycomico County and in Somerset and in Worcester County of certified engineers. And we have no training program for certifying people in any of our three counties right now. And again, it's the entry level.
I'm sorry, we do.
Okay.
It's the Maryland Stationary Engineers.
Stationary Engineers certification.
Yeah.
But.
But we do that.
When we have the demand, when we have enough people in the program, and that's the key.
When we have the demand, that's, that's, that is an issue, yeah.
And we know that we have enough people in the program, but again, the entry level into it is so, so minimal as far as the pay goes, that it's hard to get people invested in it. So, here's an opportunity for them to be invested and have their first round of certification so they can go ahead and move up the ladder.
Exactly.
It's a wonderful opportunity for them.
It is.
I noticed, um, on your list, John mentioned plumbing. And I know, um, the Wycomico County Board of Education dropped their plumbing program. You don't offer plumbing either, so we brought that up, but, um, is there a need, is, do you have any requests for that program now, or?
We do, we hear it, uh, for sure. Now, the issue with most of our trade programs, with the exception, well, with a lot of them, we actually, uh, use Parkside to do that. So, if they don't have a plumbing program, then we don't either.
Yeah.
So, that, that would be an issue for us. We do not have what I would call a technical career building on our campus.
Okay.
And probably could use one.
Yeah.
Certainly, with many of these areas. So, we partner with the public schools to, to be able to teach some of these classes.
Okay, okay.
The construction trades, for example, are all in there.
Yeah.
The welding program that's listed here is not the same one that we have, uh, with Katerina Enderfeld that we do in partnership with them. This is one that we do at Parkside.
Just trying to get back to the prioritization part again, because we know we have limited funds. If you know you have one class that are coming up, that's only going to have three students, and you have another level of classes that already has, let's say, fifteen. Would you then maybe decide to prioritize this so that you can say, hey, we're going to create a huge incentive to add more students to this particular class? Other words, if you only have three, I'll say plumbing again, if you only have three in plumbing, but you have ten in CDL. Well, this program might add ten more to CDL, but if you created the incentive and prioritized it for the plumbing, then you would fill a class and, and you wouldn't have one teacher teaching three students, you'd have them teaching ten.
Right.
And that would make you more efficient.
Well, we actually don't have one teacher teaching three because we cancel those classes. And we've got to have a minimum of ten in most classes now.
Yeah, I'm wondering whether you can use this to help reverse that trend.
I, I hear what you're saying, and interesting thing about the non-credit program, the start dates don't follow the traditional college fall-spring schedule. These things go start and end year-round. Which is good for people who are coming in because they get it, they can come in at any time, it's not, they don't have to wait till January or wait until September to be able to start this type of training. But to make something like that work where, oh, we need more people over here, let's incentivize them by doing this, or instead of that. The reality is, with the truck driver training, we probably have enough paying customers. With other means, veterans are now paying, uh, veterans now can use their veterans' dollars to help pay for that. And, um, the, um, tri-county council supports a lot of those individuals as well to, uh, take some training activities through, to that, uh, program. But we, we're not able to fill every class, but we fill most of them. Uh, again, because of the demand and that sort of thing. But we have too many people that can't afford it, that can't get into it, is an issue.
To go to John's point, it, it almost seems that with these sort of things, that there's almost, it's a market demand. I mean, you're, you know, and the fact, if there's nobody in a certain class, maybe it's because people don't think they can get jobs in that certain class. And, you know, if it were a forgivable loan, then people would have even more incentive to make sure that they took classes where they have a job. Because if they were, you know, taking some class where, oh, I might get a job, and it was hanging over them, well, I have to pay this money back if I don't. Then, you know, that's even more incentive to focus on those classes where, you know, it's a really good chance that I have, you know, or line up something beforehand to do it. So, and I don't necessarily think that, you know, we should probably top-down prioritize certain things. You know, give the incentives to the students to say, you know, choose wisely and, you know, you'll be rewarded. And, you know, they can decide whether or not it's, makes more sense to be going to truck driving class or lobotomist or whatever, and then, you know, where the market demand is. So, I mean, I, I don't think maybe we should, um, micromanage you too much on, on this end. So, I'll, I'll, I'll side with you over John on this.
Get the date in time.
Yeah, I know you had suggested, you, you began the whole conversation saying the council had an interest in this a year ago.
Right.
And I think, I think there still is the interest in this.
And frankly, this is an opportunity for you to shape this. I mean, we're bringing it here, so you, to get your input and see how you'd like to see it shaped, and certainly, um, I've, I've heard a lot of different things, I'm not sure what's just.
You never know.
What's the consensus?
You never know, I know. You never know until, until it's finally done, but I, I do really like the forgivable loan program. I'd really like that idea, the matter of figuring out how to make it happen.
Back in the sixties.
I remember.
I had a good friend, I have, I have, I have a neighbor, I have a neighbor that's just retired as a schoolteacher a few years ago, but he went to college at College Park. They needed teachers.
Yeah.
So, they paid his, the state paid his tuition, the only agreement was he had to teach in Maryland for a certain amount of years.
That's right.
This will work, you know, and, and, and this is what I'm hearing, I, I'm not hearing that part, but I'm hearing from citizens, you know, I voted against the tuition program, you know? But I'm hearing from citizens, you know, what do they got in it? You know, why should we be, and I know John, it's an investment, you're right, John, you're, I'm going to agree, we don't agree much on that. But I'm hearing from people, why should, why should not they have some kind of investment in this themselves, you know, to make sure they go? I've heard, I guess, the record, what was it, how many graduated out of the, how many came?
Well, nobody can graduate yet.
Yeah, but.
Nobody can.
Quite, quite a few dropped out.
They have three years, and this is one year.
So, no, it's not been really successful so far, as far as the amount has stayed in.
Well, I'm.
Let's stay on target.
Yeah.
Yeah, I know, okay, but anyway, this can be, uh, this could, this could work better for everybody, I think, if it was done.
Okay, I'm going to stay on target, too.
Two weeks, two weeks.
Everybody good? You good?
I'm good.
Thanks for taking the time, Rick, because we know, we know how busy you are.
Thank you. Appreciate, you know, and you are obviously very busy, too. So, everybody have a wonderful Thanksgiving and get some lunch.
Thanks again.
Question, what is the next step?
Yeah, what is the next step?
Um, I guess we'd like to see, you know, to, to sort of feel out what you think you could possibly do on, on Joe's recommendation as a loan program.
I want to talk to my staff about how they feel they could incorporate a repayment process that, you know, within a structure that we may not have.
It's the record chasing, the.
Yeah, that's, that's my real concern.
It's administrative record chasing. Would, would we want a work session this again?
Oh, I don't, I have no doubt about it.
We work session the, um, the resolution that was delayed.
Yeah, we, I, I always had an assist.
Come back on the fifth?
Can I, can I ask for?
Or is that too soon?
That's too soon.
Okay.
Uh, it's, whatever, whatever works for your schedule.
I need, I need a couple more weeks.
Yeah, whatever works for your schedule, you let us know and, and we'll get it on the agenda.
Yeah, because I've got to process this with some people who aren't there right now, and I've got a couple of dates coming up with.
And Wayne, is it something that can be done outs? I mean, we did that loan program with, um, what was that program we did here a few years ago?
The impact fee.
Impact fee, is it something that we could work through our office instead of the, or?
Yeah, I, you know, as you were talking about that, Joe, I was thinking, okay, well, you know, is, is there some way that the county could set up some sort of a tracking mechanism? I just have to, I have to give some thought.
It would be, other, you're saying it would be a county loan as opposed to a community college loan?
Right.
Yeah, and, and, and again.
Ray likes that, actually.
I like that a lot.
It's really not where they're working, it's where they're residing.
Right.
Because the benefit to us is the income tax.
Right, right.
Well, but don't, also remember where they're working helps because you're helping our local businesses being more successful.
They're very unlikely to be living in Wycomico County or working in DC, that might be, very unlikely. They're going to be working in the tri-county areas, or Sussex, in Sussex.
Oh, we want to.
Live here because we have lots of open spaces.
Thank you for even considering.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. Next on the agenda is the animal control ordinance.
You're the only thing between us and lunch.
Well, you're the only thing between me and lunch, so. There are a couple other members that are here with me, I'll let them introduce themselves to you.
Yes, if you could, after you sit down, um, everybody come up, take your time, and then, um.
Thanks for coming in.
Just left for the public, Mark, could you turn that mic around so that everyone has one? Thanks, great, thanks, Mark. Um, I don't want to say it here. Okay, if we, we'll go from lef- left to right, is there some, yeah, okay. We'll go from left to right, just state your name, please, and, uh, you know, if you're on the committee, let us know that, whatever your reason for being here today, and we'll start on the left.
Your left.
You're good.
Debbie Russ, Debbie Russ, I'm on the committee.
I'm Aaron Bolson, Director, Humane Society Director, Animal Control.
Hannah Walls on the committee.
Hi, Linda Mills on the committee, I also have a rescue called Coalition of Kerry.
Great, and I can't tell you how much I would like to thank you all for, uh, for taking the time to put this together. It's, it's no easy thing, no easy task, and that's why the county actually wanted a committee to do it, so we appreciate the work that's done.
Absolutely. Um, yes, we went through quite a few meetings, a lot of emails back and forth with each other discussing things. I do believe you guys had a copy that was sent to you in advance. We went through basically line for line, everything in the entire ordinance. My understanding is that the last time it was revolve, revised, it revolved around, uh, the dangerous dog laws due to a child getting bit, I do believe it was out in the Willards area. So, we tried to go through line by line to actually cover all our bases on this. There's some language that was very arcane, some, uh, laws that were out of date with standards when you look at other counties and states, cities. And along with what HSUS, Humane Society of the United States recommends. So, we looked at various counties, uh, cities in Maryland, outside of Maryland, um, all over the place to kind of gather good starting points. Like I said, we went through, some of it was, some of its major changes, well, not too major, but, um, there are some bigger changes. Some of it's simple housekeeping, um, arcane language, grammar issues, um, some stuff that could be, be perceived in a, you know, sexist manner. For example, for animal control officer said his, 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 the whole way through. Uh, I talked with the county attorney, Roscoe Leslie, we decided that it needs to be the animal control officer, or his or her. Technically speak, I'm not a lawyer, but somebody, if I gave someone, if I had a female officer that gave somebody a citation for interference with an animal control officer, as currently written, it says, you can't interfere with his duties if it was a female. And she got, you know, a lawyer that didn't mind putting up a good fight, they make the argument, well.
I, I can see that, but I believe, uh, even in our charter, I'm not sure, it, in the definitions, it references the fact that any reference to his, references.
Okay.
Whatever the official term is for male, female.
Okay, so you have, so in the charter would supersede that, so.
In definition, no, in your definitions, you could do that.
Or into the definition, yeah.
Definitions, you could do that.
And that's.
Makes sense to clean it up.
Yeah, and that's where a lot of that, and that's why we got a lot of eyes on it. I know the, uh, that Roscoe Leslie sent it over to the county exec's office and sent it to, uh, your guys' office, uh, uh, offices. So that we could get as many eyes on this as possible. So, I know you guys have had a chance to review it, from my understanding, so without any questions you have or comments on anything in particular.
The, the, well, you know, it all looked pretty good, and I appreciate all the work you've done. Um, I don't, nothing stood out, all that major. The only thing that concerned me was, um, taking away the authority from the council to set, um, fees and giving it to the animal control authority. Um, I think we should probably have a discussion at the council level whether we want to, um, that is, I'm sorry, one thirty-three dash four, section one thirty-three dash four, um, on page six, on, it's probably page six on, uh, within our PDF.
All right, it might be different online, let me try, for, you said it was for licenses?
Yeah, licenses and fees, um, dog license fees will be established by the animal control authority, so, see?
Okay, I see where you're at now.
So, um, I mean, and, and we, we should probably talk about that, whether or not we think that it's okay to delegate that authority to you, or whether we, these fees need to be set by the council with the authority of the executive. I, I think it was probably archaic language.
Yeah, let me.
And, and so now we might need to be, include the executive in there with the council, but I, when you're setting fees, I like to have, like, the politicians set in it because we, if someone doesn't like it, they can let us.
Yeah, and I completely understand, um, yeah, because it did say in the old one, I see cost of this tag shall be established by county council. I know there was some stuff with, uh, the rabies vaccine, the health department chimed in, that they wanted to be able to set their fees, for example, because of how their vets are, somebody might charge a different fee to them for the rabies vaccine. So, I know that, there was a issue that was brought up from the health department as to that. I absolutely have no problem from my end with the county setting fees. Yeah, that's not something that bothers me.
Yeah, I mean, okay, I mean, and on our end, we mean, if we want to retain that authority, I think we probably have to include the executive in there, you know, just to update the language from our end.
Okay.
But, I guess we talk with attorneys and they figure that out, if we want to do that.
Yeah.
Mr. Cannon, can I just, I, I think that may not be delegable, anyway.
Okay.
I think. Depending on the nature of the fee, yeah. Did you want to, um, review some of the, um, specific changes that you feel stand out more than others?
Okay, so, so some of the specific changes that, um, we did that stand out, um, is we added a section for community cats. Basically, just defining it that a community cat is not a, considered to be a stray cat. It's considered to be a cat that's been vaccinated, uh, it's been spayed or neutered, and it is under the care of a, what they call a colony manager, basically. So, that way, we can look at doing TNR programs, um, in the county. The trap and kill method is scientifically proven not to work, it creates a vacuum effect. And, you know, if I take a cat out of a space, another cat's just going to move in. But if you take a cat out, you spay and neuter it so it can't have kittens, and you put it back in, then it fulfills that space in the environment. It's the, it's simply the same as, I live in an apartment complex right now, when my lease ends and I move out, somebody's going to move in. They're not just going to avoid that space forever. So, that's, you know.
How about if there isn't another cat to fill the space, though?
What's that?
How about if there isn't another cat to fill the space?
There's always others' cats. Within the course of a year, you can run into two hundred cats within an area that can be.
My father died, I got rid of all ten cats that run around the barn, none came back.
You're awfully lucky, because I don't hear many of those stories. Yeah, I don't, I don't hear many of those stories. We get a lot of people that get frustrated with us because they're continually trapping these cats and bringing them into us without getting results. There is, there are some groups, uh, in the county that do TNR, the community cat programs, on a small-scale basis. And one of my goals out of this is for the, the people that do do it currently, um, I would be able, this way, to get their contact information. So, if a cat does come in and it has the ear tip or belongs to their colony, that I can make sure it gets returned back to them. And also to where, if they wanted, we have, you know, the, probably roughly about eighty percent of the cats that come into the shelter are feral. And it would give a chance to be able to get some of these cats out as barn cats or into some of these TNR colonies that are out there. It's been proven effective for rodent control and things like that. Atlantic City has, uh, feral cats on their boardwalk, uh, New York City uses them in their subway systems. You know, it's all around, the benefit is there, it's just a slow process, just because you're TNR cat, doesn't mean you're suddenly not going to see any stray cats. And, you know, it takes a little bit of time, but, um, that's one of the changes I'm looking at, is really just defining it, not necessarily setting the program in motion. I mean, you take baby steps with the program like that. But defining it for the people that are out there doing this already. So, we, we defined that unsafe weather conditions, uh, has been altered in the old ordinance. It was, uh, anything below freezing or above a hundred degrees. I'm recommending that to be changed to below thirty-two, above ninety degrees Fahrenheit, or during active weather warnings issued by National Weather Service or Wycomico County Department of Emergency Services. This is two on mine, I don't know, this is in the definitions where I'm at right now, it's, uh, the very last definition. So, we altered that a little bit was because what we've seen historically, uh, over the summer, the temperature doesn't actually break a hundred all that often. the temperature doesn't actually break 100 all that often. A lot of other places use 32 and 90 as their benchmarks for the temperature. Throughout the summer, we get calls all the time. Some of these people sitting right to my sides have been ones that have called me on it. But when we check the weather service, you know, the temperature is only 98, it's not 100. So it's not technically considered unsafe conditions under the law for, for the animal.
Should not, should not, and I know this is a tough call. You know, I had a problem a few years ago. Folks called me about a dog that was tethered outside, you know, and it was hot and no water, neighbors were taking it water. We have got, I've got a neighbor that's got a St. Bernard. That dog, he don't want to be in the house anytime.
Yeah, and that's...
So how do you, you know, if somebody's got a Newfoundlanders as an example, how do you justify saying they've committed this dog to unsafe weather conditions by being outside when it's 25 degrees, and that's basically where the dog wants to be?
That dog has a lot of hair. In the winter, he would be okay, for sure. Maybe, I don't know.
Yeah, I know, but you're saying if you make the law so, you know, you could go cause somebody problems because it is below 32.
Well, a lot of that has to be taken into officer discretion as well with the officer that's out there. We had this exact law, this was written exactly how it was when I was with the city of Pittsburgh. And, you know, it was, there was a guy that had a husky, I remember, and, you know, we didn't, we let him know about the law, but we didn't take his dog from him or anything because the dog did have proper shelter and things like that.
But you're making it a law.
But there's exceptions. Hunting or sporting dogs is also listed in there, isn't it, Aaron?
Towards the back, there's a section on.
Okay, all right. So there are exceptions.
So are you saying it's complaint-driven?
This law, it's complaint-driven, and it's also based off of laws in other, you know, neighboring counties and areas like that. But yeah, this is one of the major complaints I get, is I have people call me in the summer, there's a dog out, it's 95 degrees out, why can't you come take the dog? Well, the temperature has to be over 100 by county law, is what I tell people.
If your officer, county officer's driving around and sees a dog out here and nobody complains about it, but he knows that it's in violation, is he going to move on it?
Well, if he sees something in violation on his own, he'll take it, but I have...
So it's not complaint-driven?
Well, I do get complaints about it, but my officers, I have two officers that have to cover the entire county.
Right, I understand that.
So I mean, it's hard for them to see everything.
Everything, of course.
You know, the residents of this county are really my eyes and ears.
So it's sometimes complaint-driven?
Yeah.
Okay.
To address Joe's concern, would it be possible to write something in there about, you know, discretion for, you know, cold weather animals? I mean, you know, you know, one officer may have discretion, but if they want to enforce the law strictly, that person could be in trouble. And that's, I think, there, you know, where somebody could use that as a defense if, you know, the dog is a certain cold weather dog and certain, you know, reasonable, you know, if it's a reasonable situation.
Yeah, I mean, again, I'm not a lawyer, so, you know, that'd be something the lawyers would have to look over. But I mean, there could be something in there that, you know, about discretion being used for cold weather dogs within the appropriate, you know, you know, I mean, as long as the dog has shelter and, like, like the husky I was talking about when I was in Pittsburgh, the guy had one of the best animal shelters I've ever seen. The water bowl had one of the heaters that you can go to, like, Tractor Supply and buy and put in the water. I mean, the dog was perfectly fine, and it was a cold weather dog. It's a husky, it wants to be in the cold, you know. So, you know, a lot of this stems from people, you know, that have their dogs tethered on the chains and stuff like that, is where a lot of the complaints from the weather come from. The other reason for throwing in the active weather warnings is for, you know, areas that are getting closer to the bay and by the rivers, they're susceptible to flash flooding. And if you have a dog tied out and the flash flood comes up, you know, a dog can only swim for so long, and then it's not going to be able to swim any longer. And that's covered under tethering later on. We kind of shortened, the county attorney thought it would be better to kind of take some of the definitions and actually put them into the actual law where they're applicable, because how it was written previously, there were a ton of definitions, and even just something simple, going to write a citation, I would have to go to the part of the ordinance that makes it illegal, but then I would have to keep flipping back to the definition to check on the definition. So we kind of mixed them in to make things a little more streamlined for us. A lot of the licensing remained the same. The dangerous animal, potentially dangerous animal, one of the things that we looked at changing is that, under current law, any dog deemed dangerous has to have a euthanasia order put under it. We looked at scaling that back to where it's not a mandatory euthanasia order. We also detailed a little bit more the secure enclosure. For example, if it's an outside, it has to be a lock structure with secure side roof floor that provides protection from the elements for the animal, is suitable to prevent the entry of young children and is designed to keep the animal from escaping, and it has to be approved by the animal control authority. So we really wanted to tighten that up. One of the other things that I added in, and I'm not sure exactly what page it's on now, I lost it. But under standards of the way the animal has to be kept, one of the items that I added was if your dog is deemed dangerous or potentially dangerous, you must post notices on your property, at least at a minimum. The secure enclosure that you would have outside for the dog, one side, one sign on every side of the fence and a sign at the entryway of your door proclaiming that there's a dangerous or potentially dangerous dog on the property. And a lot of that's just a safety issue. I try and put myself in the shoes of your postal worker, UPS driver, FedEx going to deliver a package. I would like to know if there was a dog that has been deemed potentially dangerous or dangerous on that property.
Where do we go when we have, okay, we had an incident on Wollston Switchword, you've probably heard about it.
Yep.
The dog didn't bite the lady, but he chased her in the house and she fell down trying to get up the steps. So how does that, how can you, and it was a neighbor's dog that was out on this lady's property, so...
Yeah.
You know, where do you move at on when things like that happen?
Well, when the dog, for that, initially it would be the dog running at large, it would get a citation. For dangerous or potentially dangerous, that it's defined, and I do believe it's even under the state law, that the dog has to cause severe injury. It doesn't say that the dog actually has to bite, it just says it has to cause severe injury. So I would say that there would be an argument to be made that it could be, at a minimum, potentially dangerous.
She thought so.
And that's something that, you know, could be deemed and appealed to the animal appeal board, and they could, the lawyers could have that one out.
Does that help to clearly define it for the, for the person that has to go out there, the officer that has to go out there and make a decision? How, what discretion do they have to define the difference between what they might consider to be less than a severe injury or a severe entry?
Well, and a lot of this, a lot of these changes were brought to me by the health department, because typically the health department deems it dangerous because they get a bite report, and they have to go out on these. So they're out there with us, and they've made the call, and we're working on kind of integrating how we can both be more involved, working together on making the call of whether it's deemed dangerous or deemed potentially dangerous. And I mean, there was one instance, last year it happened. There was a dog that had chased a, another dog, and it killed the dog. But because of the way the law was worded, the dog had to be deemed dangerous, and the owners of the dog spent thousands of dollars appealing the euthanasia order, finally got it overturned, and were able to take their dog back. Because, under how it's written now, if a dog's deemed dangerous, then it had to have the euthanasia order put on it. But there's been a couple of times that the health department has told me that they feel stuck between kind of a rock and a hard place when making that determination as to whether the dog should be deemed dangerous or potentially dangerous. So a lot of this updating was at their request as well. Those are the main changes to the dangerous dog laws. Every, everything as far as that remained mostly the same. On tethering, we did make some changes as well. The, we added that it's prohibited to tether an animal under certain circumstances that endanger its health, safety, or well-being. There's a list of about 11 of them. This, it's section 133-7. This all came together, looking at other laws, looking at what we currently have, and looking at the complaints that we receive about other people. So we have tethering of an animal between the hours of 10:00 PM and 6:00 AM is what was put down. I do believe it's Delaware, and there was one other county in Maryland that had a similar law. What's that?
Kent County.
Okay, yeah, Kent County. Second one is unattended tethering of an animal during unsafe weather conditions, meaning if your dog's tethered, you let it go outside to go to the bathroom or something when it's unsafe weather conditions, but you're there with it, it's not illegal, but if you have your dog out for, I think later on it mentions more than 30 minutes at a time, unattended, then it becomes illegal. Using a tether that weighs no more than one-eighth of the body, of the animal's body weight, that's used to prevent people from using those big thick tow chains that weigh like 20 pounds, putting them on a dog and trying to use that as a tether. We would also like to see that a tether has to have a swivel attached to each end. That's to prevent people from tying dogs to stationary objects they can get tangled around, such as trees, basketball hoops, gutters, rims of a car. Those are all things that we'll see on a daily basis, so this is to help prevent that.
What's the purpose of the 10:00 PM to 6:00 AM?
That's something that was requested. I mean, there's all sorts of hours that are looked at in different laws. I know Delaware did a outright ban, or they tried to do an outright ban, the way it was explained to me at one point, and they found it very hard to enforce, just an outright ban on tethering.
What's, what, why the 10:00 PM to 6:00 AM? What's the, I mean, if the dog's tied outside from 8:00 AM until 9:59?
The, the majority of the thought process behind that was to help prevent animals from being tethered 24/7, so that they do get a break from the elements and different various things. There's people that have their dogs 24/7 on a 10-foot chain, and that's supposed to prevent that from happening.
And it seems, excuse me?
No, you go ahead.
It just seems like there are more and more counties are adopting these laws, and they're being successful.
Who do you have to enforce it, though?
That's right, you have very little manpower, and they're not going to probably be able to hit every individual, every situation they see. Rather be maybe, like you say, a large hairy dog or whatever, that, you know, and, and the owners have proper shelter, they're following all the other guidelines as far as cable, everything like that. But then there's the dogs that, by the time they're eight weeks old, are chained up, and they live their entire life on a chain. And it's an end for those really, really abusive cases for the officers, if there is a law.
Well, I understand, I understand that, but you also have a situation where you've got the temperatures. So say it's 95 or 100 degrees out, and folks keep their dog inside all day, keep him in air conditioning, and they want to tether him outside at nights, so they can't do that because it would be against the law. You've got to be careful with the law if you pass.
Yeah.
And I'll give you an example. A few years ago, we had the graffiti law come along. And, you know, there's a lot of graffiti, and it was being aimed, they were blaming gangs, which probably was. They came in here with a law outlawing anybody having spray paint in their car.
Yep.
So, I mean, that meant you can't go to Pep Boys or, you know, Home Depot and get a can of spray paint and drive home without breaking the law. Now, it was said, oh, well, it's just meant for the gangs. Now, you can make a law, and it's meant to do this, but...
Oh, yeah, there's always adverse effects that can happen.
You make people lawbreakers.
Yeah.
And I'm not criticizing that, I'm just explaining how I feel about this. And I understand where you're coming from on this, but you've got here where you can't keep a dog outside during the day if it's 95 degrees, so you keep him inside in the air conditioner where he's covered. But now you're making it against the law from the chain him up at nights when it's cool outside.
Yep, I understand exactly what you're saying. Yeah, yeah, it's a fair and reasonable argument, and that's the whole purpose of these sessions to me, so...
And you say this is complaint-driven, and this is, I understand that, but, you know, you get neighbors, and one of the worst things in the world is having a neighbor with a dog that barks all the time.
Yeah, and that's one of the, one of the issues with my job, is kind of weeding out the vindictive neighbors, so to speak, that, you know, they...
This would cause neighbors, this would just give neighbors another reason to...
Yeah. So, yeah, we, I mean, we get complaints that, you know, neighbor, you know, your neighbor made a complaint on you, you made a complaint on him, and I mean, I've had that where I've gone all day back and forth. So I mean, you know, there, I understand exactly what you're, what you're saying. But that was, like I said, that was something that we saw, I do believe it was in Delaware. Like I said, I know they, at first, from my understanding, started with some, like, 24-hour ban, and they found it impossible to enforce, so it was kind of one of those, why have it on the books if we can't even enforce it? Situations that they had. And I know they revised it, I'm not sure their exact wording now. Most of the tethering did remain the same. Dog has to have access, food, water, et cetera, and a shelter. We changed the at-large slightly. Previously, the law was just dog running at large. So if you had, like, pet chickens, pet goats, pot-bellied pigs, which are considered domestic animals, and they were running loose, there was nothing, I couldn't write them a citation for running at large because the law specifically said dog. So we'd like to alter that to animal at large, which would give me the ability for some of the people that have pets that are goats and pot-bellied pigs that are consistently on the loose, and they get mad at me when I talk to them on the phone because I can't write their neighbor a citation for it. That would give us the ability to actually give a citation to, you know, somebody's goat that's running down the middle of Rockawakan Road, which has happened before. In the past three months at the shelter, we've had two goats and a pot-bellied pig come in, so. It does, it does happen, but there's no recourse as far as giving a citation or even a warning for it right now. So that's mainly the, the only change to the at-large, is just changing that one word from dog to animal. And then obviously the disclaimer that if it's a hunting, herding, tracking dog, and you're using it for that purpose at the time, you're exempt under that law. Dogs on school grounds, recreation areas, the one change we made there was when, at a public, when at a public recreation area where organized activity is being, is being conducted, such as, like, pork in the park, something happening at City Park, dog must be on a leash no, no longer than six feet. Again, that's complaints I've gotten, and I've seen them at events where there's hundreds of people around and someone has their dog on a retractable leash, and the dog's going 15 feet away from them. It's mainly a safety thing. They have proper control of the dog, dog's not running out from different corners. So that's the main change to the school grounds, public recreation areas. Empoundment redemption procedures were basically left alone, same as confinement, euthanasia of certain animals, nuisances, we didn't change. From here on out, there's not a whole lot of changes that we run into. With sheltering, we had the shelter be raised three inches off the surface of the ground. That's to help prevent, from what I mentioned earlier, with flash flooding. So if you're, you know, you know a storm's coming, you're on your way home from work, your dog's hiding in its doghouse, it at least has that three-inch buffer if, you know, a flash flood or something comes along. Other thing is keeping, between November and March 31st, have a windbreak on the entrance. So if you do have your dog outside, you know, it's 35 out, it's still pretty cold, and a gust of wind comes along, it helps block that wind from actually getting into their doghouse.
Can we get a copy of this with the changes? I know most of the time we get these things, you know, the original is there, and then you...
Can we get a copy of this with the changes? I know most of the time we get these things, you know, the original is there, and then you've highlighted the changes.
With just the changes?
Yes.
Or, yeah, I could, yeah, I mean, I could send that with just the changes, because I know it's hard to follow along when you have this and that crossed out.
You have it in here.
It's on the back.
Go all the way down.
It's all the way down.
Lot of red ink.
Start over.
Lot of red ink, go to after the red.
Okay.
Um.
Sorry about that, okay.
Oh, you're good. Um, so that's the, the main thing that we added with the shelters, uh, having it raised three inches off the surface of the ground. Um, and then during the summer months, uh, we'd like the shelter to be positioned in a way that, uh, prevents direct exposure to sunlight. So, you know, under a tree, um, something along those lines, which a lot of people do already. Um, but for the people that we know have a doghouse just sitting out in the middle of the field.
Porch, porch camp.
What's that?
Porch, under the porch, is that okay?
Yeah, I mean, it's, it's, it's out of the sunlight, so, um, I've actually seen people that have a doghouse built in underneath their porch, so. Um, people are creative when it comes to their doghouses sometimes. Um, the, there was a vacant, a vacant section of one thirty-three eighteen. We added, uh, breeder licenses in there, which is, um, basically just piggybacking off of the state law that was changed, making it, making it applicable. And instead of making a list of a bunch of standards, um, we just took the, you know, breeders have to maintain the same standards that pet shops would need to maintain as far as animal gets sick, you need to keep it isolated from the other animals, you need to actually be taking care of the animals and things along that nature. Um, the animal appeal board, the only change there was, um-
Any particular violations if you don't have a breeder's license?
What's that?
Any particular violation if you don't have a breeder's license?
Uh, I think we added one in the back, uh, yeah, five-hundred-dollar offense.
Gotcha.
Um, and, you know, that would be on animal control to establish a, uh, database that people would be able to register in. Um, so we could keep track of the breeders. Um, and it also gives us the ability, I talked to Worcester County, and they're able to do it. Uh, their animal control officer said that they have the ability, when somebody registers or gets their license as a breeder, that during normal hours, so not, you know, eleven o'clock, twelve o'clock at night, they can go to the person's place and check on the facility and make sure that the animals are being cared for. Um-
Your first offense is the same as your second offense?
That's what we have down. Um,
Okay.
I mean, it can be updated, but usually if there's an offense a second time, you're probably going to be looking at state charges, to be honest, other than just a citation. Um,
Okay.
But, I mean, that can easily be changed up to the thousand, along with most of the other things. Um, a lot of times, the, the citations, to me, the dollar amounts on the first offense, second offense, that's more of a deterrent than anything to me. Um, so, um, the animal appeal bo- the animal appeal board, the big change we have, well, the only change really we had on there was, uh, previously, or right now, a, um, member of the board must be someone that works at the health department. We took them out of that because if the health department has the ability to deem some of these dogs dangerous or potentially dangerous, and they're also serving on the board, then you have a giant conflict of interest, and that's not good to have, especially on a situation where someone's appealing the possible euthanasia of their dog. So, they requested to be takeoff and just add another member of the general public, um, into that. And then, from then on out, um, everything else is basically the same from there on out throughout the rest of the document, minus some grammatical housekeeping-type issues on the document.
Okay. Um, trading on real fine, fine, thin ice sometimes is when, because I've had so many complaints over the last year, more than anything, of someone that says, you know, I go outside, and the dog next door is just so aggressive, and they're scared to come out of their yard. The dog hasn't bitten anybody, I guess, I, I don't know how you would consider whether it be a public nuisance or potentially dangerous. But the, what do I, what is there to tell these people? Because they haven't gotten resolution to these issues, and they literally say, I come out my back, my back door, there's a dog in the, in the next door.
Yeah.
Not a fence, but I'm scared to death that dog is going to attack me. What do you, what, where do you go?
There's, there's not a whole lot we can do. Um, I mean, if the dog's consistently barking, then there's nuisance citations that can be issued.
Well, it growls, I mean, it literally comes towards them. It's on a tether, but it comes towards them, and they are just worst-case scenario.
And that's the, the problem we run into is, um, not be, because the dog hasn't bit anybody, it hasn't done anything that caused injury to any, you know, any other person or animal. Um, so, I mean, there's, there's nothing as far as deeming it dangerous or potentially dangerous that we could do. Um, and then you look at, you know, the only other thing you could do is severely restrict, you know, at that point, you're asking me to go to people's yards, or go to people's homes and tell them, you know, your dog's growling at your neighbor, you're not allowed to have it anymore. I mean, then you, you know, breach upon someone's ability to own property, and, you know, it's one of those between a rock and a hard place where, you know, I tell people, I understand your concern, but it's, you know, I mean, I, there, there's noise complaints and things like that. Like, if your neighbor had a souped-up car or truck, and it was really loud every time he turned it on, and you called the sheriff's department, they might be able to go out on a loud noise complaint, but they're not gonna, I mean, unless he has illegal additions onto the truck, he's not gonna be, you know, sheriff's deputies aren't gonna be able to tell the person, well, you have to sell your truck.
It's the same as if somebody threatens you personally.
Yeah.
You know, I mean, a person threatens you, you can't do nothing about it until they do something.
Yep, and
It's a shame.
And the way the do- and the way dogs are looked at is as their personal property. Um, so it's kind of hard to find that middle ground when it comes to something like that, between a dog that's actually been aggressive or a dog that's showing aggressive tendencies. I mean, some dogs are just naturally protective of their property. Um,
The more they're on a chain, the more aggressive they get too. So they're on a chain all the time.
It, um, you know, there's a lot of factors that can go into it that makes it kind of hard to-
So, under nuisances, it says a dog, you can't allow a dog to become a public nuisance if you allow the dog, an animal, to be a danger to a person. It's, um, page ten at the bottom, one thirty-three twelve. It is unlawful to allow an animal to become a public nuisance, including to allow an animal to be a danger to a person.
Yeah, and then the problem I have with that is what defines danger.
Right.
Um, there's no definition for it that I've seen, and I don't want to be the one to define exactly what danger means. Um-
Danger or a threat.
Yeah, uh, and that's, you know, does a dog growling constitute it being a danger? Um-
So, somebody calls me and says, I got a problem because this dog's doing this, and I talk to animal control, and they say, well, this dog hasn't really established that it's a public nuisance, it doesn't establish it's a danger to anyone?
Yeah, and that's, and that's the tough call to make, is, you know, with, with something that's such as growling, is, are we able to establish that the dog's actually a danger to a person?
And I know, as I said before, it's thin ice, but, I mean, it's, it's a difficult, it's a difficult answer to tell somebody that we can't do anything until he bites you.
Yeah, and that's the thing that I hate. I mean, that's, that's something we could look at in the future. Um, usually with the nuisances, what we have to do with those citations is get the neighbor to go on record, because typically somebody has to be nuisanceed for the citation.
What if somebody were to come out with, because everybody has cell phones, right?
Yeah.
And I'm sure this is an easy solution. What if they come out with their cellphone, and they sit and they videotape, you know, thirty seconds of this dog?
Yeah, and that's-
Charging and the growling or something.
I've heard different, I've heard different things on that, that, you know, I've had some people say that that's considered hearsay and wouldn't be allowed. Um, i- it's, it's touchy, but usually, um, we have been able to take some photographs and stuff like that before, um, in lieu of someone actually going on record, because a lot of people don't want to go on record.
Is there a fence there?
No fence.
No fence, the dog?
If it was the neighbor, I'd just build a fence. They won't have to look at the dog anymore.
And if the person gets a citation for just a nu- a nuisance, right, to begin with, and the next time around, they get another citation, and education at the same time by the animal control officer, that may make a difference as well. You know, just, just being acknowledged, you know, we have an issue here with this dog, you know, and, you know, you, you understand you're going to be fined, and if we get another complaint, we'll probably have to fine you again.
But, but they're not get- they're not getting fined. There's absolutely nothing that they're, they're being told, there's nothing that anyone can do. And my question, I guess, really is, if this person, if I tell this person, well, videotape the dog.
Yeah.
A- and, is that sufficient based on these laws?
And that's something-
Is that sufficient for an animal control officer to issue a citation or to pick the dog?
And that's something I'll ask, uh, Roscoe about. I'm not sure if, about with citations and getting film or, you know, pictures or video of the dog doing whatever it's doing, whether it's the growling or a dog defecating on your property, or whatever it may be, if that's sufficient enough to, uh, write the citation. Um, the problem we run into with those is like the barking dog. Um, my guys have trouble writing a citation for that because they're not nuisanceed by the barking. Um, and I'm not gonna have them sit outside someone's house for three, four hours to, till they get tired of hearing the barking, because we have a lot of ground to cover in the county.
Well, can animal control just go over and check? I mean, that's a complaint. Can animal control go over there and check?
Yeah, we still, um, and on some of those, usually what we do is, uh, we'll do check welfares, and at least we try to go out and make contact with the owner. Um, but-
So maybe they should be calling it-
So will they respond to something as simple as a public nuisance, or do they only actually really go out if it becomes more, more-
They should be going, I mean, we've gone out on nuisance calls before, so the guys should be going out, I can double-check with them as to if there's something they're telling people they're not going out on.
They, they haven't proposed that to me. They haven't suggested that at all.
Oh, okay, yeah. Um, yeah, usually every couple of weeks, I sit down with the officers and try and go over certain, you know, if someone's called me or emailed me directly, I've asked them if they've gotten the call, kind of play the devil's advocate of have you gone or have you not gone with them. Um-
The story I got from the Wollston Switch Road incident, the dog chewed his way through a stockade fence, and then chased a lady into her house, and there was multiple calls made.
Yeah.
And, you know, um, different neighbors calling, you know, so.
Yeah, and I know we, we dig it out, I, when the story was relayed to me, I didn't know about chewing through the stockade fence.
That's what I was talking about, I didn't go witness it, but that's-
But I know, it took us a day to get to that one, um, because one of the animal control officers was pretty sure that he knew the person directly, and he didn't want a conflict of interest going out there and giving the citation, so he had to wait for my other officer to be able to go out. Um, but I know we did go out there, and I don't think I've heard any complaints relayed to me since then.
The lady that got hurt doesn't want anything done with the dog, she, she, but she wants the neighbors to keep it up.
Yeah, and that's, I know we went out there and we s-
Of course, a dog can chew through a stockade fence, you know, you've got a problem.
Yeah, you gotta figure out another way to keep your dog secure. Um, so, uh, yeah, and that's, I, like I said, I don't think we-
He's aggressive, is what he is.
Yeah.
Do you think you have enough at this point to come back with a final product?
I think so. Um, probably some back and forth with members of the committee that aren't here right now, and with the, uh, county attorney and kind of hash out some, a few more things.
All right, because we could hold another work session, or we could simply bring it to the council. This would go through a public hearing, would it?
It would, yes.
So it would, there were a couple more processes we could go through.
Okay.
Uh, that would still allow an exchange, and maybe even some amendments during the process.
Okay.
Or we could have another work session, but I think maybe we could move forward to, um, a more formal document that would then allow us an introduction and discussion at another council meeting.
Yeah, that'd be-
Far enough along where the changes are minimal?
I think we are. Yeah, I think we are to where the changes would be minimal, and it'd be simply just checking and making sure that, you know, everything that would be changed is still legal with the lawyers and everything.
Good. Does council feel like we're at that stage? Joe, you feel like we're at that stage?
Mr. Cannon, I just, I have one question. Is this, is this ordinance, and I should know the answer, but I don't. Is this ordinance intended to apply countywide, inside the municipalities, or just in the unincorporated areas?
Hang on one second, could you repeat that, so?
In other words, is it going to apply inside the municipalities, or just in the unincorporated areas of the county? Is it going to be totally countywide, applying Salisbury, Habron, Willard, you know?
Yeah, it should be countywide, um, whether it be Fruitland, Willards, Pittsville, Mardella Springs. Um, now, the city of Salisbury does have their own animal control based through their police department, and I know they have their own set of local ordinances as well, that I think. So this section, this doesn't apply to city of Salisbury, from what I understand.
Would it be perhaps wise, though, to take a look to try to integrate, I mean, not integrate's not the right word, but coordinate them so they're the same as much as possible?
With the city of Salisbury?
Yeah, just, I mean, I'm not saying just follow, rote what, you know, what Salisbury's done, but, you know,
Yeah.
if there is some ability to be uniform.
And I've looked at some of theirs, so some of what's in here is kind of in line. Um, some of their stuff, I'll be honest, I wasn't a fan of what was in some of their codes, but, uh, but-
I think we're at a stage now where we're happy with what we have, and I think it's a great suggestion. We'll send what we have to the city and let them do all the incorporation.
With the, well, then, then in the other municipalities, though, that don't have it, is it intended to apply to them?
It is, um, per everything that I've been told since I took this job, that they fall under all of these laws as well.
All right, well, that's a great point.
It might be something worth putting in the ordinance.
Yeah, and-
Laura, we should probably distribute this to all the local towns and municipalities.
And I know a couple of the municipalities have sign, I think Willards has one that they did that says basically that all, by Comico County laws, apply to Willards. Um, we have an agreement with Delmar on the Maryland side. Um,
Well, I think what we could do is, we send this to them, and suggest in there that if there's any input that they would like to give, to let them know it is going to a public hearing, and, uh, we would entertain, uh, any, any recommendations.
Absolutely.
And-
The Farm Bureau too. She's in Farm Bureau.
Joe wants to send a copy to the Farm Bureau as well.
And would, would it be possible to have that meeting at night, being so open to the public?
Well, have it at night.
I have one question.
Yes.
I want to know how you got rid of your father's cats.
Took them to the Humane Society.
Oh, okay. Just checking.
He kept, he kept them around there, and then there wasn't anybody living there. He fed them, you know, they were all just rabbits and whatever.
Community.
Couple at a time.
Yep.
What do you think our timeframe's gonna be here?
Um.
This is second meeting in November, um-
Cold weather's coming.
Yeah, I would say, I mean-
We'll have to do the introduction first before the public hearing. The introduction would have to be a night meeting, so they, can we do an introduction with enough notice? Well, the introduction doesn't need notice, but we'll do an introduction first at the next night meeting.
Okay.
All right?
I'll get the letter out.
Well, well, the next night meeting, that'll be the first meeting in December though, right? Does that give you enough time?
Um-
Or do you want to take it in January? First meeting of the month is a night meeting.
Okay, I'm trying to look at my calendar.
Let's do January.
Yeah, because I know, is that the first week of December that that would be in?
Tuesday.
Yeah, if it's the first week of December, then I'm not even gonna be in the state. I'm gonna be in Nebraska that week, so. Um, I know the first week of December wouldn't work at all for me.
Put you on, let me put you on speakerphone. We'll do, we'll do January. Let's give you a, a date, if, to see if it's workable for everybody here.
Okay.
Uh, first Tuesday in January is January, January second, Tuesday, January second.
That works perfectly fine for me.
Either that, or we go to February sixth.
I'd rather get it done in January then.
You guys figure that out, but, you know, those are your options. Let us know, get back when Mrs. Hurley, let her know what you want to do, okay?
Okay, sounds good. Thank you.
Great, thank you very much.
Thank you.
All right.
Thank you.
Take care.
I'll let you guys have lunch now.
Thank you.
Welcome. Okay, can we just- We're gonna go ahead with Dallas on the Barren Creek right now.
It's only, it's only gonna be ten minutes, Joe.
Next item on the agenda is Barren Creek.
You gotta be quick.
Yeah, we'll be, we'll be quick if you guys.
Sounds good to me.
Real quick, give us money, we'll build it.
Next item is amendment to the capital improvement program to increase the, um, two thou- physical utility project calls for the Barren Creek Road design and construction.
I mean, it's not new money, it's shifting money from the last year.
Yeah, e- e- exactly.
So, keeping money the same, just shifting it forward so it gets done quicker.
Exactly.
Thanks, Mark. I mean, seriously, that, if that, that sounds like-
Yeah, so, so what we want to do is, we want to get, we want to get a jump on, on, on moving this forward. Um, there's money in the upcoming FI eighteen bond, but there's, that, that's been marked for this project, but there's also money in the, let me make sure I read this correctly, the unencumbered, un- Where's it at? Hold on. The unassigned capital bond projects has money that we're going to use to forward fund this to start now, as opposed to having to wait until after we get back the, uh, the, uh, the, the bond sale. That way we can start now, get a jump on it, and get these moving as quickly as possible. That way we can start now, get a jump on it and get these moving as quickly as possible.
So, I mean, if it doesn't cost anymore, it's going to get done quicker.
Mm-hmm.
Great, you, you have my support.
Anybody else?
Just glad you got it.
Any other questions?
Yeah, yeah, we're excited about this.
A gentleman want to join us for lunch?
I thought there was more than one CIP amendment.
There was, there was Barron Creek and then there was, um, a solid waste.
The West property acquisition, yes.
We talked about that last time.
We closed. Which property are we talking about?
This is, the, there's the, the.
Merle Culver.
Culver property. We've included.
Brick Hill and Ruby? Yeah, this is off of Brick Hill.
Yes.
No, I think I'm worried about the one up on Highway.
No, that one's not.
So we're not, we're talking about the properties that are within a reasonable.
The, yeah, the, um, Merle Culver piece is the one that, um, the owner has accepted the appraisal value. And that's on the other side of Brick Hill from the current landfill. The Potts property, um, we had the appraisal done, they're having a second appraisal and we said we'll continue discussions when that happens.
Okay, any other questions from anyone?
Just for clarification, um, so is the Merle Culver piece, I mean, you, you got the dollar amount and everything ready?
Yes, it, in, in a previous submittal, we had the appraisal, it was six hundred and seventy thousand for forty-three.
And that was the agreed amount?
Yes.
Okay, I just need to know for the public hearing notes.
Oh, yeah, 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 um, Paul, Paul Wilbers drafted everything, so if you reach out to Paul, he can give you, or I can have Paul reach out to you.
I was coming up to Annacoke Road Sunday morning and way, from way down Annacoke Road, you can see the top of the, I was surprised.
Well, we broke, um, we, we broke the tree level and that, that's complicated things infinitely because the winds are unrestricted and plastic bags and trash easily.
Time to put up some windmills.
We'll let you put that forward, but we, we've had, we have more fencing up there than we've ever had before and the wind can change, you know, so quickly and we can have the whole side of the landfill covered in.
We lock the land, plastic bags, these little tote bags.
And balloons, and balloons.
Any other, any other really, really important discussion? Gentlemen, any other questions? Thank you very much.
All right, thank you.
Entertaining motions adjourned.
I was on topic. A couple weeks ago. Smelling right.